Regular and special sessions of Cottonwood Maintenance District Board. Roll call, please.
Chairman Schlum.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cantino.
Here.
Board Member Dickey.
Here.
Board Member Elke.
Here.
Board Member Hanson.
Here.
Board Member Brown.
Here.
Board Member LaGue.
Here. Great. Anyone from the public on Cottonwoods?
No, sir.
Thanks a bunch. Item one, consideration of approving the Cottonwood Maintenance District Board meeting minutes, May 19, 2011.
Promote second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item two, public hearing regarding Resolution CMD 2011-02, approving final budget of the district for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2011, ending June 30, 2012. Open the public hearing. Anyone from the public on this item?
Yes, sir.
All right. Rick or Julie, anything on this item?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you. Any discussion? I'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Promote.
Second. All right, all in favor? Aye. And I'll call the next meeting to order, and I see that everyone is still here. This is our special session agenda, and we're item number one is consideration Resolution CMD 2011-02, approving the final budget of the district for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2011, ending June 30, 2012.
Promote.
All right. In a second, Rick, Julie, anything to present on this item?
We have none, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Any discussion, council? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Aye. Close.
Chairman, seven zero.
All right, look for a motion to adjourn.
Promote.
Second. All in favor? Aye. All right, we're adjourned for two minutes until our next meeting.
You did it.
Thank you. Good job, guys. I didn't mean to do the second one. That's the second roll call of the first meeting. Actually, I'm going to mention it here. I'm going to mention it here before the block watch. Good. That's great. Mr. Brand. Great. The flat top. Oh, we do have. Time? Okay, great. Thanks. Yeah. Do I need to do something?
That'll be, that's right.
If you give my email regarding the budget for the, as I understand that nine thousand dollars came out of last year.
Right.
Color for the monuments?
Right.
All right, we wanted to match as closely as we can the buildings behind them. So. Yeah. Yeah.
All right, we'll go out there and take a look at them.
Are you supposed to be eating candy up here?
Okay.
All right, everyone. Welcome, everybody, to the Fountain Hills Town Regular Town Council Meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Schlum.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cantino.
Here.
Council Member Dickey.
Here.
Council Member Hanson.
Here.
Council Member Elke.
Here.
Council Member Brown.
Here.
Council Member LaGue.
Here. Thanks so much. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America, and to the representative for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for our invocation tonight. Pastor Daley from Trinity Lutheran Church is here. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and fellow citizens of Fountain Hills, would you bow your heads with me for prayer? Most merciful God, many years ago, our spiritual ancestor Solomon spoke to you in prayer. He confessed his inexperience and lack of knowledge for governing your people. You blessed him with wisdom so that no one was ever as wise as he. Because of his humility, you also granted to him and to his people abundant blessings. Today, we come before you confessing our own shortcomings and inabilities. We need your help if we are to lead your people. For our council, we ask that you give them wisdom to know what is right and courage to accomplish it. Give to them a spirit of collegiality in their discussions and a servant's heart for the people they serve. For our citizens, help them to treat their neighbors as they themselves would like to be treated. Lead us toward developing true community rather than just living together in a community. For those who work hard, bless their labors. For those who lack adequate food, clothing, or shelter, supply their needs, especially through the generosity of those of us who have received so much. For our world, grant peace to troubled lands, justice to the oppressed, freedom to those in bondage, and happiness to those who mourn. You have been a gracious God to us, giving much more than we either have asked or deserved. With gratitude, we acknowledge all that you have done and humbly look forward to all that you have planned for us. Hear then our prayer, for it is offered in the blessed and saving name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Daley. I did our roll call out of order. I already did our roll call, so I won't try that again. We've done that enough tonight. Move on to Mayor's report, and to get us started, we've got a proclamation, believe it or not, to read, that is recognizing a birthday for our neighbors over in Scottsdale. Whereas the city of Scottsdale will celebrate 60th anniversary on June 25, 2011, and whereas the town council and residents of Fountain Hills wish to extend congratulations to the city of Scottsdale on its many accomplishments, and whereas the city of Scottsdale has been cooperative and collaborated with the town of Fountain Hills in many ways over the years, and whereas the town of Fountain Hills wishes to express its appreciation to the city of Scottsdale for the beneficial relationship that exists between our two municipalities, now therefore I J T Schlum, Mayor of Town of Fountain Hills, do hereby proclaim the town's official congratulations to the city of Scottsdale on its 60th anniversary and hereby thank the city of Scottsdale for being a helpful and supportive neighbor. So, I know they have some parties coming up, so look for those opportunities to celebrate with our neighbors over there in Scottsdale. Now, we get to learn a little bit more. If you hadn't heard, the Rock Burglar was captured, and it was an arrest here in Fountain Hills that led to that capture, which is, was really, really welcomed, to get someone that's been burglarizing homes throughout our community and others for many, many years. We're going to go, we're going to have the opportunity to have a presentation from our sheriff's office. Captain Joe Rodriguez, here in Fountain Hills, will go over the capture of the, supported the Rock Burglar, and we can learn more about it, and then after that, we'll have opportunity to share our thanks with the sheriff's office and the many folks that were integral in that successful capture. So, Captain Rodriguez, thanks for coming out tonight. Thanks for giving us some of your time, and let's hear about how this all went down.
Mayor Schlum and members of the council, thank you for allowing me to come up tonight and make this presentation, not only to you but the citizens of Fountain Hills. The information that you will find that we're about to put out is limited because the investigation is still ongoing, but I hope it provides everybody with enough information that they have an understanding of what took place throughout the investigation and that led to the capture of the Rock Burglar.
Need help, Matt? Oh, there you go.
Yep. Dave gave me a quick tutorial on that. Beginning in 2007, a series of burglaries began in the town of Fountain Hills involving residential homes. The homes were always unoccupied with the homeowners either away for the day or on vacation. Though most were equipped with alarm systems, the homes were often left without the alarms being sent. This is, and this is one of the important things that I think was floating out there is that the homes were often marked, and they were marked in such a way that the suspect would be able to tell if the homeowner had returned prior to the burglary. And one of the things, a comment on that is, you know, that goes back to leaving newspapers in your driveway, letting them pile up, leaving mail in your mailbox till it's coming out of the, you know, coming, it gets too stuffed and starts coming out. Those are just a few of the simple things that can lead to your home being marked. The method of entry into the home, items stolen, and the trace evidence left at the scene by the suspect were always similar. The suspect in these burglaries would not take from the home any item that was easily traceable by law enforcement, which made his identification or apprehension difficult. In the past, we talk about burglaries of a home. We talk about TVs, computers, the large, the large-ticket items. This was not the case in this incident. A computer analysis of the open burglary cases, however, did reveal a pattern to the suspect behavior. That analysis, may I point out, was done by a member of the sheriff's office, Ms. Mary Rowley, who is here to accept the appreciation certificate as well tonight. And this analysis did reveal a pattern to the suspect's behavior and based on his past reported behavior. Using that information, again, information's good if you actually put it to use, and we did, it was gathered, and a team of detectives was formed to identify and apprehend the suspects. And this is the part I do want to thank my command, Deputy Chief Frank Minnell, Chief Deputy Jerry Sheridan, who is also resident of Fountain Hills, and Sheriff Arpaio. They listened to my presentation that I presented, and not only did I present them the problem, I also went to them with a solution that I thought would be the best for the situation. That solution was given to me by the team of detectives that we had up here. So with that being said, we formed this squad. The team of detectives took a more proactive approach to the situation. We engaged in aggressive crime scene processing and enhanced surveillance operations. If you were a victim of a burglary in the past few months, you would have noticed that not only did you get a patrol deputy, but you also got a detective and a crime scene technician that came and processed for any type of evidence that may have been left behind. On the night of May 15, 2011, a surveillance operation was conducted by that team of detectives. Many of those people that were in attendance on that operation tonight are here. A search of the town by the detectives revealed a list of homes which matched the profile of the homes where the burglar preferred to strike. In other words, we're getting into the hunting grounds before he did. That list of homes was narrowed by the Detective Sergeant, Sergeant Overton, and Case Agent Jason Benzel for the investigation to three possible homes. Basically, they took a stab at it and said, "If I was the burglar, this is where I think we're going to, we would go tonight." So they did a pretty good job of getting the criminal mind going, so that concerned me a little bit that they got so close. The detectives were assigned to covertly watch those chosen homes from static locations nearby. A K-9 deputy was staged nearby while additional non-uniform deputies were used to patrol the area on bicycles. The other resource that we used is we did have the helicopter in the area also ready to go. During the course of that surveillance operation, we had a citizen call into the sheriff's office 911 call center to report a suspicious man who appeared to be hiding next door. Part of this was started, this call was started by the fact that the bike team actually identified somebody that they thought was in the area that didn't, that shouldn't be, and they began to go after that subject, and that led to the helicopter and the K-9 deployment. The deputies who had been staged on that street responded to the home and found a suspect hiding in the front yard. That suspect was found to be in possession of tools which were consistent with those used in the series of burglaries being investigated. Things are starting to fall into place. The suspect, identified as Robert J. Neese, was transported to the police station for processing. There he is. A little bit of history on Robert Neese. He was once arrested, or I'm sorry, once arrested, a court order was requested and signed by a judge, which allowed detectives to collect the DNA sample from Mr. Neese. Mr. Neese was booked into Fourth Avenue Jail by detectives for his possession of burglary tools on that particular evening. Upon his release from jail, detectives began an active surveillance of Mr. Neese. A test, meanwhile, the DNA was being tested, and that took about two weeks, but the test of the DNA sample collected at the arrest showed that Neese was in fact responsible for many more burglaries than were suspected. And I do want to give credit to the Scottsdale Police Department's crime lab for taking that DNA evidence and processing it in such a timely manner. If we would have sent that down to the Department of Public Safety due to their backlog, it normally takes between a year and two years to get those results back. Scottsdale was able to get those within about, I believe, 10 days, if my memory was right. So they, they did a great job for us in that case. Through the DNA, it was also learned that Neese was known to law enforcement by a much different name, and that was the Rock Burglar. Now, I will be the first to admit, that's not who we set out for. I cannot give us that much credit. We set out to capture the burglar that was, was going through the town of Fountain Hills, but we got the Rock Burglar, and we'll take it. A little history on the Rock Burglar. He is attributed to committing nearly 325 burglaries beginning in 1993, spanning over 18 years. These crimes involve three different, different police jurisdictions, including the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office, Scottsdale Police Department, and the Paradise Valley Police Department. The property lost by the victims of his burglaries is estimated at well over $10 million. Robert Neese has been scientifically linked to both the Rock Burglar burglaries as well as a series of burglaries here in Fountain Hills. He is currently in jail, awaiting trial on these charges. And again, I know we're about to honor these, the men and women that were involved in this. I do want to thank not only the council but also the town staff, Fountain Hills Times for the support they provided us through this investigation. One of the things I have problems with is being able to release as much information as I wanted to during the course of this investigation. And I know people want answers, they want to know what's going on, and I think I was very lucky that we had a lot of patience on, on the part of a lot of entities in the town that allowed us and trusted that what I was telling them, that just give us some time and let us work, that we would produce the results. And I think we did that. Because we caught the Rock Burglar does not mean our job's going to end up here. We, we have vowed to remain diligent to not let this happen anymore, and we're going to continue to push our resources to provide the best law enforcement we can for not only the community but for all of Maricopa County. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Captain Rodriguez. Obviously, a team effort, as you pointed out, already new numbers of different folks talented in different areas pulled together to, to capture someone that's been chased for 18 years, and it's really a feather in the cap of everybody on your team to have caught the Rock Burglar. And as a community, I know we've done it before, but we want to formally, as a council and as a community, thank you, sheriff's office, all the deputies, all the individuals involved in capturing this person that violated a lot of folks' homes and, you know, shook their feeling safe in a community where that's really the number one thing in most people's reasoning to live here, and the quality of life, safety is huge, and you guys took care of business as you will continue to do so. And if it's all right with you, I'd like to come down there and thank you, and then read off some names and ask those individuals to come forward, receive a certificate from our town indicating our thanks and appreciation for a job very well done in our town of Fountain Hills, and then if those folks would maybe stay up here, up by the dais, and maybe we can get a photo or two of the folks that were involved, and it's numerous, and I know not everybody could be here, so please pass along our thanks to those that couldn't be here, as well as we're most gracious for the work you guys have done, the quality and the speed. Using that data and the computer analysts is just, that's mind-blowing, and the fact that you were there where the snare was set at the right spot is pretty phenomenal, and it gives us a lot of faith going forward utilizing technology as well. So, thank you, Captain, on behalf of the town council and the town of Fountain Hills. And then there may even be a few folks that were maybe victimized or others that just want to, from the community that wish to share their appreciation at the microphone after we get a picture or two, and I might invite them forward also.
Great. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. As I mentioned, if you folks wouldn't mind coming up when you hear your name, and I'd love to give you a certificate of our appreciation, and then remain standing up here if you wouldn't mind for a photo or two. Does anybody know Lieutenant Dave Munley? All right. Figured everybody knows Lieutenant Munley. Sheriff is here. Great to see you, Sheriff Arpaio. Thanks for coming to lift up the deputies tonight, as I'm sure you're excited to do so. Lieutenant Munley, thank you very much. Appreciate it. We appreciate you. Keep up the great work here with the team in Fountain Hills. Thanks, sir. Sergeant Marty Overton. Marty, you're here tonight. Excellent. Great job, Sergeant. Appreciate it. Detective Benzel. All right. Thank you very much. Detective Mackowitz.
Thank you very much.
Detective Harris.
Thank you very much.
Detective Beerwalter.
Thank you, Sergeant. Appreciate it.
Deputy Oaks.
Thank you very much, Deputy. Appreciate it.
Deputy Graham.
Thank you very much.
Deputy Sterns.
Thank you very much.
Deputy Douglas.
Thank you very much.
And Tactical Flight Officer Terry Heimgartner.
Thank you very much.
And Pilot Josh Johnson.
Thank you very much.
And Criminal Analyst Mary Rowley.
Thank you, Mary.
And some of the folks that couldn't be here tonight, Deputy McFarland, Deputy Aaron Gregory, Deputy Mark Lebone, and Detective Jason Thomas. So, thank them when you see them around the community as well. Great job, certainly a feather in the cap of each and every one of you and all those that support the operations here, but let me just read what this certificate of appreciation reads here. "In recognition of diligence, dedication, collaboration, ingenuity, and devotion to duty as a member of the task force that erected the suspected Rock Burglar in the town of Fountain Hills on May 15, 2011." So, Sheriff Arpaio, Captain Rodriguez, the rest of the leadership in the sheriff's office, thank you for empowering and leading a great team of deputies, detectives, pilots, and so on and so forth, to do a great job here in our beautiful county, and of course, the best town in the world, Fountain Hills, Arizona. Sheriff, thank you very much. Yes, sir. Everyone. Very good. We can all scoot, scoot down here a little bit and get closer than you're comfortable with one another here. Can imagine. We'll try to get a picture or two here. Some folks have cameras here. Feel free to stand up and get over this podium a little bit and get a couple of pictures. The video, obviously, is rolling up there, and terrific. Where's our sheriff? Oh, here we are. Okay, terrific. Captain, you're in here? Okay. Some guys tried to sneak out of these. Thank you very much, guys, for coming. Please smile for the picture.
Counsel, why don't you stand up? Counsel, that, stand up. I'd like to be in here because we're here celebrating and appreciating our sheriff's office wants you to be a part of it also. Thank you. Bob, did you get all this?
I'm going to do that one.
There we go. A little more.
Was he up? Being more comfortable.
A little bit more and more.
Anyone else picture?
Good.
All right. Thanks again so much, and if there are anyone from the public that would like to come forward, I thought there, I know some of the victims have shared their appreciation with me and maybe with you as well, but Ms. Brand?
Yeah, feel free. Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Schlum and council members, my name is Chris Brandt. I've lived in Fountain Hills for 30 years, and two years ago, we were victimized by this burglar, and I want to publicly thank this great team, and I'm very proud of them, and it has given some closure. My wife, Ellen, and myself lost 34 years of physical memories in that break-in, and so that does, this has given us some closure, and I want to thank them. I did want to just add two thoughts that I had as I was coming.
Detective Harris. Detective Beerwalter.
Appreciate it.
Deputy Oaks.
Thank you very much Deputy.
Deputy Graham. Deputy Sterns. Deputy Douglas. And Tactical Flight Officer Terry Heimgartner.
Thank you very much.
And Pilot Josh Johnson. And Criminal Analyst Mary Rowley. And some of the folks that couldn't be here tonight, Deputy McFarland, Deputy Aaron Gregory, Deputy Mark Debone and Detective Jason Thomas. So, thank them when you see them around the community as well. Great job, certainly a feather in the cap of each and every one of you and all those that support the operations here. But let me just read what this certificate appreciation reads here. "In recognition of diligence, dedication, collaboration, ingenuity and devotion to duty as a member of the task force that erected the suspected rock burglar in the town of Fountain Hills on May 15, 2011." So Sheriff Arpaio, Captain Rodriguez, the rest of the leadership in the Sheriff's Office, thank you for empowering and leading a great team of deputies, detectives, pilots and so on and so forth to do a great job here in our beautiful county and of course, the best town in the world, Fountain Hills, Arizona. Sheriff, thank you very much. Yes sir. Everyone. If we can all scoot down here a little bit and get closer than you're comfortable with one another here. You can imagine. We'll try to get a picture or two here. Some folks have cameras here, feel free to stand up and get over this podium a little bit and get a couple of pictures. The video obviously is rolling up there and terrific. Where's our sheriff? Oh, here we are. Okay terrific. Captain, you're in here. Okay, some guys tried to sneak out of these. Thank you very much guys for coming. Please smile for the picture. Counsel, why don't you stand up? Counsel, stand up. I'd like to be in here because we're here celebrating and appreciating our Sheriff's Office and want you to be a part of it also. Thank you. Bob, did you get all this?
Yeah.
There we go. A little more.
Was he up? Was he up? Being more comfortable.
A little bit more and more.
Anyone else picture?
Good.
Alright, thanks again so much and if there are anyone in the public that'd like to come forward, I thought there, I know some of the victims have shared their appreciation with me and maybe with you as well, but Mr. Brandt? Yeah, feel free. Thank you.
My name is Chris Brandt. I've lived in Fountain Hills for 30 years and two years ago, we were victimized by this burglar. And I wanted to publicly thank this great team and I'm very proud of them and it has given some closure. My wife Ellen and myself lost 34 years of physical memories in that break-in. And so that does, this has given us some closure and I want to thank them. I did want to just add two thoughts that I had as I was coming down here. One of the areas which shows that somebody is not around is of course, the recent delivery of the telephone directories. And I'm wondering whether there's something we can do, obviously we want free enterprise, but if we could have the delivery in somewhere in December, January, when the majority of the people are here. And of course, I've already gone around, I'm sure other people have gone around and picked up telephone books of people who are not around for the month. So, if we could persuade people to print them in the winter, that would be one thought. The other thing is, those little bags of rocks which the landscapers will leave in the driveway if they're there for several days, then that again, of course, shows everybody that there's nobody there. And the third thing is of course, that sometimes people advertise by leaving something on the door handle of front doors. And I don't know whether there's anything you can do to contact people and tell them they cannot do that. Obviously we want to look for free enterprise, but it is a warning sign or a flash to people of ill repute or whatever. And so those are my thoughts. But again, I want to thank them all for their work and I'm hoping that he will go away forever. Thank you.
Thank you Mr. Brandt. Very good. Hi Voice, how are you doing?
Good.
Good.
Mashallah, council members and especially all the officers. I just really want to sincerely thank all the officers for the professionalism, their dedication, their compassion. When we arrived home, not two years ago, but just a couple of weeks ago, the officers were very compassionate. They knew what we were going through. They talked us through it, they helped us through it, they were willing to stay and be with us during this time of trouble. And I just want to thank them for their professionalism, everything I just said, but in particular, I want to thank them for their results. And that's the best thing. So, thank you very much and we appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you Voice. Mr. Baldwin. I also recognize, is it Chief Deputy? Chief Deputy, is that the title?
Are you asking?
Mr. Sheridan. Well, I just wanted to, yes, please come forward and this is one of Fountain Hills' finest, finest, I guess you could say it twice, right? Because you're here in Fountain Hills as well as our beloved Sheriff Arpaio, but I wanted to thank you and congratulate you as well on your new responsibilities of the Sheriff's Office.
Oh, thank you. It's an honor to stand before you, especially in an occasion like this. Somebody that's evaded capture for all these years, some good, honest, hard police work was put together in this case to take care of business and your deputies, our deputies, detectives did all that and included some new scientific analysis and some high-tech equipment, night vision, helicopters, all of that. But I just wanted to thank you for having us in this community. We love serving Fountain Hills. And I'm sure if you invited the sheriff, he might even have something to say about that too.
Sheriff Arpaio, I know, I know, you kind of, yeah.
One thing I have to say, there's a rumor that our town manager's leaving. I don't know, that's probably just a rumor. He can't believe what you read in the papers. But if he is, you know, you are the town manager, you, don't you look at the law enforcement too? Nobody's talking about you. You should get some credit too. Maybe because you're leaving, nobody cares, but you should be giving the town managers. Let's not forget him. So, I want to thank you and wish you luck wherever you're going. And we're going to miss you.
Absolutely.
As far as this situation, I'm very proud of our deputies. On a personal note, I took office 1993 and that's when the rock burglar started and I said, one day, we're going to lock this guy up. I never thought you'd be in our hometown. But he's a guy that broke into the Vice President's House, Quayle, so he has a pretty good record. So, I'm glad that it happened in our town. And one more thing that I have not forgotten, you may have, but in 1992, just before I got elected, Sheriff, we had a real estate person, I believe Julie Patterson, for you've been around, that hasn't been solved. So, I'm hoping before I leave office, that we can get that case solved. We should never forget that case too. I haven't forgotten it. So, maybe we can get a lucky break with all this high-tech that we have these days, DNA. So, let's not forget that homicide. Once again, I want to, I'm very proud of our deputies, very proud of serving Fountain Hills, not just because I live here and Jerry Sherrod, I just appointed him Chief Deputy, not because he lives here, has nothing to do with it. And I'll close with this, Mr. Mayor. We're not going to charge you for the helicopter, the dogs. We're saving you money.
It doesn't happen, so it's a good thing.
You're lucky you got the sheriff and the chief deputy living here. But anyway, I want to thank all of you for your support and your backing and understanding, as the captain said, it's very difficult sometimes to keep your mouth shut and trying to get these cases solved, knowing that one day we may do it. So, I want to thank all of you, like the captain said, including the news media, if you saw it around. We ought to give him an award for not printing certain things, but I want to thank the local newspaper for cooperating. That's important. Thank you.
Thank you very much Sheriff.
If I can just add one thing, we were lucky enough to live in that neighborhood and the night the helicopter started going around, it was a wash or two away. And the longer it stayed, it really got my attention. And it was so impressive to watch this because you could see, you know, the flashlights and then the helicopter and it just, and it went on for quite a while and it was better than watching TV. So, thanks for the entertainment.
I definitely got a few calls that night and that morning. But yeah, thank you very much. The resources are much appreciated and that's only because you've got such a tremendous department there at Maricopa County Sheriff's Office. And I see some families here also, thanks for coming down, recognizing your loved ones here for the important job that they do. We're very grateful. And we thought we'd also move on to the next item, which is about Block Watch, since it goes hand in hand with the resident that called the Sheriff's Office and said, hey, somebody's hiding out in the bushes, I think, or wherever it was. And that's something that we can do as citizens to help mitigate crimes in our community and Block Watch is an important element. And to get us started with that, we'll go back to our Captain Rodriguez to talk to us about beefing up and rocking and rolling with Block Watch here moving forward.
Thank you Mayor, members of the council, and I do appreciate you putting me on the agenda tonight with all my bosses here. That's always very nice to do. Usually there's only about four people in the audience. I'd prefer those nights if you don't mind. But yes, it is, you know, I think we've all discussed, this is a prime opportunity to ride the wave of success and regenerate the Block Watch program that has been present in Fountain Hills. With the change of command and the change of some other personnel, the Block Watch has somewhat been put on the backburners because it does require the personnel as well. And as you can see, we were not only busy, we had to call for more help for other reasons. But the intentions are to ride the wave of success and to regenerate our Block Watch program. The Block Watch program, I think is very instrumental for, especially for a town like this, where it is somewhat spread out and it is difficult at night to maneuver around here, there, you know, the absence of streetlights and things like that. And it kind of makes citizens actually get out and start knowing their neighbors. Instead of driving home and opening your garage from the car and pulling in and closing the garage behind you, it promotes people to get out and meet their neighbors and to take an active role in the policing of their own neighborhoods. The, one of the things I've seen since I've been up here is that I've gotten a comment, I've received emails, I've received phone calls, people will call in to report an activity or to ask about a certain activity or tell me that maybe they saw something suspicious in their neighborhoods, but they didn't call. That's usually how the, or they didn't know who to call or they didn't know what to do. And the Block Watch program will give them those instructions of what to do, what action to take, what they, who they should and shouldn't call. But as I stand here, knowing that this is the last council meeting until the, for the summer, and this will be replayed over and over on Channel 11, be diligent if you think there's something going on in your neighborhood, if there's a suspicious vehicle, a suspicious person, if something just does not seem right, please, please call us. I will provide you those numbers here in a minute to, so you know who to call and what will be appropriate. The Block Watch, it helps build strong neighborhoods, it encourages communications, it gets people involved and it creates partnerships to help solve problems. We cannot solve all the problems of Fountain Hills by ourselves as a law enforcement agency. You know, we, I think we have a good relationship with the council, we have good relationships with town staff, but that needs to be expanded to the citizens in the neighborhoods. You guys know what's going on in your community, in your neighborhood, we don't. We don't, we just can't be everywhere all the time. So, you know the patterns. Was what we would like you to do between now and hopefully some organizational meetings in the fall, is to start identifying people in your neighborhood that would like to be Block Watch captains. Start gathering the information, the names and start putting together a plan. So, when we do have the Block Watch kickoff meetings in the fall, then you'll be ready to go. The plan is, is we discussed earlier, that we'd like to have two captains, Block Watch captains meetings annually. One in the fall as people that are here seasonally, as they return back to town, we'd like to talk to them about the things that happened over the summer and then what our expectations are for the upcoming winter and spring season. Then in the spring, before people leave town, we'd like to have another meeting to prepare for the summertime and also recap what took place in the winter and allow us to better the program as they return back in the fall. So, that would be the plan for that. Most of your neighborhoods should average about 10, 15 homes for a Block Watch captain. The HOAs, you can obviously do it bigger with your associations and that, that's fine. All the information you need can be obtained through the Sheriff's Office, right here in Town Hall, through our window. We also have some brochures that are out front. These little fold-up brochures provide you all the phone numbers that you will need to contact us and get the program started. Detective Mark Debone is the Block Watch Coordinator for the Sheriff's Office in Fountain Hills now. He is unfortunately not with us tonight, so I cannot put a face to the name, but he is available to take the calls, to set up any meetings that you have or to get you the information that you need. There's, there's a few numbers that we'd like to put out there again, just so people know who to contact if they do see suspicious activity. The good old handy number that everybody should know is 911. And people say they don't call 911 because they don't want to bother us. Okay? You are not bothering us. I need to make that very clear. It is not a bother for us to do our job. It should not be, you know, we are here for calls for service, we are here for proactive law enforcement, please call us. If you cannot absolutely remember the regular number, then call 911. And obviously if it's an emergency, please do that as well. The Sheriff's Office non-emergency number, it took me 18 years to realize this, but the non-emergency is 602-876-1011. So, if you can remember 911, 1011's right after that, that's the non-emergency number. And that is directly to our dispatch to, for any calls of service that you may need from the Sheriff's Office. The substation here inside Town Hall is 602-876-1869. I do not recommend to call that number if you're looking to place a call for service. The best and quickest assistance is to utilize the 1011 or the 911 call center. For general information in regards to the Fountain Hills substation or specific questions, then the substation number will be sufficient. Also, you may access the website at mcs.org. We'll work on it and I'll have to talk to Mike here about making sure we have the link through the town of Fountain Hills website to MCSO's website. And there are two sections on there that are, will get you to where you need to go. The first one is under Contact Us. It's a big header on the top of mcs.org. If you go to Contact Us, that'll give you the numbers for our drug hotline, animal cruelty hotline and some of those hotlines that we have set up for specific crimes. If you go to the Crime Prevention section, the header up there in the middle of the screen, that dropdown will give you several options about, it's almost like a Block Watch, but it talks about domestic violence, it talks about home safety, it talks about internet safety. There's about, I think when I looked at it earlier, about 10 items on there that it gives you information on different safety tools through the office. So, again, mcs.org is the website. If you cannot remember it, just watch when one of our cars goes by and on the car, it's actually, I think it's on both rear quarter panels of the car. So, that'll be a good resource for you as well. But we'll make sure we get that link on the website. A couple of other sites, Technocop is also on mcs.org and you can look up warrants, who has warrants in your area if you really want to get involved in your neighborhood and see who's living there. That's a good way to go about it. And we're currently, Julie, I hope I don't get in trouble for this, but Raids Online is being worked on right now with the IT department here with the town and with the Sheriff's Office. Raids Online will allow individuals to go on there and actually either select, they'll select Fountain Hills and then they can select the specific crimes they want to know about or they can do all crimes and it'll actually map it for you. And you can see, and it has quite a few dropdowns that you can maneuver those maps and extract a lot of information that you may want. And we're going to work to provide that on a monthly basis to update those numbers. So, it is, you know, within a month, month's time of accuracy. Other than that, unless the council has any questions, that's it for now.
Thank you Captain Rodriguez. I think the, going away, as we look to pulling the Block Watch captains together in the fall, probably sometime October to get going here again with some new information and updates, they'll be contacting Deputy, or Detective Debone, correct?
That's correct.
Would they call the substation number for that?
Yes, the 876-1869 number.
So, 602-876-1869?
Correct.
Alright, great. So, please, if you're Block Watch Captain already in the program, just make sure that we have your contact information at Sheriff's Office so that you're invited to the Block Watch Captain meeting in the fall. And I want to also thank the, our Public Safety Advisory Commission that's done a lot of work on Block Watch and brought forward a lot of ideas. We'll look for them to help do some of the promotion and stay engaged with that. Thanks to those volunteers on our Public Safety Advisory Commission. Thanks Councilmember Alke for bringing forward some great ideas and opportunity to leverage this capture to stimulate our Block Watch and get that going. So, and thank you again, of course, and appreciate all the deputies, sergeants and detectives and the leadership, lieutenants and sheriff and everyone in between. Thank you very much for coming out today, letting us recognize you, let us thank you and a job well done. Congratulations. I have a feeling a few folks won't be staying for the entire meeting, so feel free to...
Hey Sheriff, where are you going?
Well, thanks for coming. It's great to see you. Keep up the great work. Alright, now we'll move into the next part of our meeting and go to Call to the Public. Anyone in Call to the Public tonight?
No Mayor.
Alright, thank you. Move on to the Consent Agenda. We've got quite a consent agenda, but mostly their parties, so I'll highlight them. First item is Consideration of the Town Council Meeting Minutes for May 10, 19, 23, 2011. Then we've got Consideration of Resolution 2011-24, IGA with ADOT for Construction of Pedestrian Countdown Timers. Consideration of Resolution 2011-23, IGA with ADOT as well for Construction of Guard Rail Impact Attenuators on Shea and Palisades. Then we have Consideration of Resolution 2011-28, Approving an Amendment with the IGA RPTA Relating to the On-Demand Shared Ride Transportation. RPTA relating to the on-demand shared ride transportation services for this next fiscal year. And then we have the parties, or the liquor license applications that I'll just highlight here. Special event liquor license applications for the Fountains and Lower Verde Valley Museum and Histor- His- Historical, I said hysterical, Historical Society, they're going to have fun, that's probably what I was thinking of it, at, on the August 27th, September 21st, November 16th, January 18th, 2012, March 21st, and May 16th, 2012 as well. That's our consent agenda. May I get a motion?
So move.
Second. Go, Paul.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Mayor Schlum?
Aye.
Councilmember Legay?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cantino?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Mayor Seven Zero?
Thank you very much. On to regular agenda, item 11, consideration of Public Art Committee's request for permanent placement of the bronze sculpture Title Power of Thought to remain in the center of the courtyard area. Hey, welcome, Mark, how are you?
Thank you, Mayor Schlum and members of the council. I actually have two items, both of them are related to public art this evening. The first one, you may recall, a number of months ago, I believe it was December, I was in front of you with a request from the Public Art Committee for the loan of a piece that would be placed in the middle of the courtyard area called Power of Thought. It's obviously proven over the last number of months to be a very popular piece, probably one of our most popular pieces. The understanding at the time was it would be on loan and placed there temporarily until such time as the, up to 18 months, when the potential for having the piece be fundraised and covered, as far as the cost, and then the permanent location of this piece would be considered. I'm pleased to tell you this evening that the Public Art Committee has gained the necessary funds, and has made the request that the permanent placement for the piece remain in the middle of the courtyard area. One of the concerns, you may recall in the past with that placement and the use of the courtyard area, was the number and variety of utilities that were in that particular area. We did take it upon ourselves to go through there, and utilizing town staff did a number of locates in that particular area, and so we were able to identify some areas, and now, as you may have noticed, we're in the actual mode of constructing some of the memorials that are in the Centennial Circle concept, we're in the process of doing that. We've made some adjustments to those locations based on what we found on the underground locates. We could not locate anything in this particular area, so we did locate that on the site plans, it shows some 15 conduits that apparently are stubbed out from the building with the intention at some time being extended over to the Performing Arts Theater, but it also appears to us, and certainly showed on the locates, that those are simply stubbed out and not taken across the courtyard area. So again, pavers is what ultimately is placed in that, again, it does not preclude us from taking those pavers up as we put those additional lines in if needed. So I did take this particular item to the commission, and when it was first brought forward, and they were also in agreement with that placement, so for consideration this evening is the permanent placement of that piece, which staff is also recommending.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. So that's also item number 12, the Duck Parade. First, yes, sir.
We have an IT issue.
Okay.
He has a hardware issue he needs to reboot, takes about three to five minutes.
All right, we'll pause for five minutes, so folks, we'll put a pause on our meeting until 7:25, so we make sure it's recorded and shared, and thank you.
It did get dark, it didn't get dark until 9:45 in the summer.
Wow.
And there another, I don't know, probably 100 miles north.
They are?
Yeah, it was probably probably 10 o'clock or 9:40 dark.
Well, that's the other thing, it was kind of surprising that they were doing that in their daytime. It seems like something that...
Well, in all the, all the told of, especially that many crimes everywhere, that one that was on ABC Central on the front page, the kid who jumped on the police car and...
Yeah.
And then over to your car next to it.
And look at one broke the window that was maybe part of the station, the area. I don't, I don't usually want law enforcement, but I wanted to.
They do a really better team.
Yeah, they're better all the time.
They, they were down.
That, that game where you're lost, because everything else is really important, according to what they were on. But again, they only lost about one, like that one was the second one in the game. I, I want to...
It, it just proves that you...
Right.
Talk about...
Hey, man.
Talking about the ruins and how Vancouver went insane and burned the city.
So we have certain things from the top. Yeah, heard of it. Almost never. Yes, you can play.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that would be really unfortunate if that wasn't...
Our IT department says we have to go back and start with Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District. No, I'm just teasing.
Aye, aye.
I think we are back up and, and going. So, uh, back on to regular agenda, item 11 and 12, but, uh, anyone from the public on either item 11 or 12, the artwork?
No, sir.
Think about, um, okay, counsel, any questions on either of those two items? Mark, anything for, more to share with us?
No, just that I would add that both, uh, Mr. Miles and Santee Thompson, the president of the Public Art Committee, are here this evening, and I don't know if they had any specific comments or...
Certainly, if there's anything you would share, we'd love to...
You know, I'm not gonna stop at that.
All right. Welcome, Mayor Miles.
Thank you, thank you. We're putting the power of thought permanently in the center, and it's your next regular meeting. Hopefully, I'll be able to bring you a very comprehensive plan for development of that area. And as you have been out there, you can see the monuments that you approved a few weeks ago already going in place. But it's the duck parade that I want to mention, it's a very cute item, is there a picture of that, Dennis, we can bring up? Um, we are, just a few weeks ago, we brought you a public art piece number 100. We're getting to the point where people are starting to call us, and a few weeks ago, uh, my wife Jackie got a call from somebody who said, uh, that her grandfather was celebrating his 90th birthday, uh, this month, and they would very much like to buy a piece of art in his honor. Sandy Thompson always carries around what we call our wish book of pieces that we've looked for, and, um, so we, here we go, right there, right there, right there. There we go. This is, uh, called Duck Parade, it's done by the same artist that did Quackers. Uh, we looked at it when we, and we decided it really had to go indoors, because you can see those little ducks are just, would be too tempting. But the, uh, the Community Center Advisory Commission and the Public Art Committee have both said it will be marvelous to put it right under the dedication plaque in the community center, uh, and of course, it will bear a, uh, a plaque honoring Bob McAvoy, who is the gentleman who turns 90 this month. So, again, just want to thank you for continuing to encourage our, uh, acquisition of public art. I'm not sure whether this is gonna be number one, uh, 101, or number 102, uh, and I know where number 103 is coming behind that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Miles, terrific. It was great to celebrate the 100th piece coming there in our centennial year for the state. And, uh, the power of thoughts, a tremendous piece, and, um, so looking forward to seeing that one permanently placed. Um, counsel, any, uh, questions, thoughts on either of these two pieces? Look for a motion on item 11, the, uh, public arts placement of, permanent placement of power of thought. Can I get a motion? In a second?
No.
Thank you. All in favor, indicate to say an aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor 7-0.
Thank you very much. And item 12, uh, may I get a motion for duck parade?
So moved.
All right, in a second. Any questions on that? All in favor, indicate to say an aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor 7-0.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Um, there's one citizen that did have something for a call to the public, so I'll, we'll open the, go back to that and let, uh, Ms. Bellinier, Belliner, um, have her time for call to the public. Welcome, Ms. Bellinier.
Thank you, mayor and council, um, and, um, town clerk, thank you for addressing the issue. And thank you, um, town attorney for allowing me to speak. Appreciate that.
Is there a microphone on up here? Yeah, there it is.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Several weeks ago, a letter to the editor was authored by a Ms. Mary Ann Michaels. The letter stated that my husband and I were advocates and organizers of the recall of Councilwoman Dickey and Councilman Legay. Subsequently, I spoke with both council members in an attempt to set the record straight. Councilman Legay appeared to be somewhat interested, and Councilwoman Dickey refused to believe what I was telling her. When asked if she knew, Ms. Michaels, she stated no. I informed Ms. Dickey that I was going to demand a public apology for a lie that was stated in the newspaper. As our conversation continued, she expressed her dislike of being called a gang of four member. As we concluded our conversation, she stated she would revisit my husband's letter to the editor and get back to me. She also strangely stated that she would inform Ms. Michaels of my requested apology. I also called the Fountain Hills Times and informed them of Ms. Michaels' letter and the error in it, and discussed the need to confirm statements that are arbitrarily written in letters to the editor. The facts had, if the facts had been checked, our names would never have been printed. I'm confident that they will establish a satisfactory process in the future. Councilwoman Dickey, your friend's letter thrust us into this recall controversy, and I resent it. We stand by, however, the process of recall, because it is a statutory right of the citizens of this state and must be protected. We believe in the process of recall, and all the recall, after all the process, gave us Mayor Wally Nichols. I publicly thank you for getting back to me. However, nothing was resolved, and in your mind, nothing did change. But need I remind you that we are private individuals? As elected officials, if you can't stand the heat, get out of the kitchen. And to your friend, Ms. Michaels, I am publicly informing her that I expect a retraction and an apology, and that to impugn and slander our name and character is a crime. Your response, as you all see, is false and self-serving, and never addressed the elimination of personal choice, which is what you and the three other members of council are continually taking away from the residents. Your voting block continues to manufacture controversies. You did cause the open meeting law complaint controversy by making a groundless accusation against another council member. The AG office noted that. You did vote against the AG continuing to investigate by agreeing to attend a class. I don't know whether that happened.
Take another, uh, few moments.
Thank you so much, mayor. Your letter states that the mayor takes the lead in answering emails. When I asked the mayor about this, he provided a different response. I'd like to know what is the correct protocol? As a former elected councilwoman myself, I have heard and seen a lot of stuff, but the two, the coup de grace was more than I could handle. The disdain being labeled a gang of four member does not correlate with action. Because your response did not copy the entire council, and as all of you can see, there were only three members of council that were copied, and to me, that continues to perpetuate the horrible expression of gang of four.
Thank you, Ms. Bellinier.
Thank you for your time.
That was it? Thanks. And now we are on item 13, um, on Bob Rogers coming forward, and we'll go into a public hearing for a special use permit, uh, AT&amp;T Wireless Communications to allow reconstruction of a 43-foot, 6-inch church tower to a 53-foot, 6-foot, 6-inch tall tower in order to enclose cellular antennas at 13001 North Fountain Hills Boulevard, located in the R4 zoning district case issue 2011-01.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. Subject property is on the northeast corner of Crystal Point Drive and Fountain Hills Boulevard. It's currently occupied by the Fountain Hills Presbyterian Church. The antenna arrays would be located inside the centrally located tower. The ground mounted equipment enclosure would be near the base of the tower. In order to grant a special use permit, certain criteria must be met. The ordinance allows, in the R4 zoning district, 30-foot height maximum, or a waiver must be granted as part of the special use permit. The proposal being for a 53-foot, 6-inch tower, and even using a stealth design, requires that waiver. Staff believes that the stealth design and keeping the antenna arrays inside the tower is appropriate for the location. The ordinance requires a 100% fall-down distance. In this case, that would be 53 feet, 6 inches. The closest property line is 147 feet to the south. Staff believes this adequately addresses that criteria, and there's no off-site damage could occur if the bell tower were to fall. The ordinance require, requires 300-foot separation from a residential district. However, this property is within a residential district. Therefore, a waiver would be required for this proposal. The nearest residential neighbor is 155 feet away to the north. Staff believes that the tower location and design, including the additional 10 feet in height, wouldn't have any detrimental effect on any nearby properties. The property is fully developed as a church. Staff believes the topography and the landscaping are sufficient in their current, uh, instance. The existing tower height, uh, rather than create a second tower, just adding 10 feet should be, should be, uh, adequate to mitigate additional visual impacts, and, uh, no additional landscaping would be recommended at this time. The ordinance encourages stealth designs whenever possible. This being a stealth design, staff believes that that proposed, uh, design is appropriate for this location. And the ordinance calls for good and easy access. This is adjac, directly adjacent to a, a parking lot, both would have excellent access, both the tower and the equipment. The ordinance calls for co-location whenever possible, and the applicant has stated in this, uh, in this instance, there are no possibilities for co-location in the immediate vicinity. The proposal is to increase the main tower structure height 10 feet to match the existing cross's height, which is not changing. The antennas would then be installed inside the, the additional tower. You can see the ground, uh, ground equipment is surrounded by an eight-foot wall at the base of the tower. Planning and zoning commission voted to recommend, and staff recommends, that the town council find the criteria for granting the special use permit have been adequately addressed, and that you approve the special use permit with appropriate waivers, as noted, for the AT&amp;T wireless antenna and equipment enclosure as presented, subject to stipulations in the staff report. And the applicants are also present if you have any questions. Thank you.
Good, thank you very much, Bob. And those will, that'll cover our staff report for 13 and 14. Um, right now, we're in a public hearing. I'll see if there are any speaker cards on this item.
No, sir.
We, we don't have discussion, counsel, in our, oh, public hearing, right, not till the next item. So we'll close the public hearing, go on to item 14. Consideration of special use permit, AT&amp;T Wireless Communications, construction up to 53-foot, 6 inches tall tower, enclosed cellular antennas there at the Presbyterian Church on Fountain Hills Boulevard. Um, can I get a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All right, uh, any discussion on this item, counsel?
Just one question.
Councilmember Alkey?
Uh, was, we, we recently approved, uh, another cell tower, I think over by the Alamo is what it was. Was this for AT&amp;T, was that one for AT&amp;T as well?
Yes.
Are there any other pending applications that are coming through?
Uh, there are a couple, there's one for T-Mobile coming through, and there's another one for, uh, I believe it's Cricket, but they're not anywhere near coming to you yet.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, counsel? Councilmember Brown? Any complaints or concerns from the public?
On this application, I've gotten two phone calls from residents who received the notification letters. Both are requesting that I just explain better what was being proposed. They didn't indicate that they were, uh, concerned or objecting to it.
Thank you. Got anything else, counsel? All right, got a motion, a second, all in favor, indicate to say an aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor 7-0.
Thank you very much, Bob. Item 15, consideration ordinance 11-09, amending the town of Fountain Hills Town Code, Chapter 5, Municipal Court, by creating a new Article 5-8, administrative costs related to charging administrative costs associated with certain violations. Judge Eisenberg, how are you?
Good, sir, how are you, Mr. Mayor?
Good, good to see you.
I see you, too.
And if those in the public watch Channel 11, uh, haven't been in the court, this is, uh, our Judge Eisenberg. We don't get to see you in our council, uh, meetings, you're often in our, in the gallery here.
That's true.
But, uh, thank you for coming tonight, and, uh, we welcome you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, what we're asking for, uh, this evening is an ordinance that allows us to recover, uh, certain costs that the, the town incurs. Uh, the Supreme Court allows municipal courts to recover certain costs, uh, in the form of fees. Those are 100% recoverable by the municipality, and they go directly into the general fund of the municipality. So those are things that we're not sharing with, uh, the state or the Supreme Court in any way. In this particular case, what we're asking for is to recapture, recover, um, the amount that is spent on an average basis for DUI investigations by the sheriff's department. Uh, what we've done is we, uh, we spoke with, uh, Captain Rodriguez. We got an average as far as the number of hours that it takes for an individual deputy to, um, complete a DUI investigation. We then multiply it by, uh, the average hourly rate of that deputy, and then we can pass that cost along to a defendant who is arrested and ultimately convicted of either a DUI or, uh, an associated offense. And so what we would then do is to add that particular fee, uh, onto the other fines and fees that are associated, and once we recapture or recover that, that would go 100% into the, uh, general fund. We have the ability to do that with the, uh, council's approval, and so we're asking, uh, in the form of an ordinance, for that approval.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any speaker cards on this item?
No, sir.
All right, counsel, could I get a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Thanks, uh, questions, thoughts? Councilmember Dickey?
Mayor, just a question, maybe for Julie, that if this is going to the general fund, has this been taken into account with the budget?
Mayor, Councilmember Dickey, no. We've not, we've not included any revenue from that. We only include revenue that we know for sure we're gonna get.
Mayor, so any ramifications to this? That, you know, about having that, we already adopted our, our, um, our budget, you know, the maximum budget? No?
Um, Mayor Schlum, Councilmember Dickey, I, honestly, there are not that many DUIs that come through Fountain Hills, so, uh, even if we were to recover that $100 on each conviction, uh, you may be talking about $10,000 or $15,000 in total. Um, so I'm not sure that that would affect the, the maximum budget that the, the council would be asked to accept tonight.
Good, thank you. Any other questions, comments on this item? Very good, Judge, appreciate it. Looks like, yeah, cost recovery is a, uh, theme that's been, you know, discussed and applied quite often, and...
Yes.
That, this is good. Um, all right, we have a motion, a second, all in favor, indicate to say an aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor 7-0.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Judge.
Thank you.
Item 16, consideration of purchase agreement, Burge Ford, state contract vendor, for a 2011 F-150 Ford truck, amount of 28, 929 for the use of the fire chief. Um, Fire Chief Agreka, how are you? Good, welcome.
Good evening, uh, the purchase of this truck here is, uh, falls under, even though it's a little past the, uh, 10-year policy of replacement. Uh, I did make one budgetary error last year, uh, thinking I could get this truck to last another couple of years. I failed to, uh, include it in the budget to be replaced this year. Uh, but during the course of this year, I came to find out that I had a bad number three cylinder. We thought we could repair it to make it work. Uh, we tried several tricks, didn't work. Uh, the next step is to replace the engine. The engine is $5,000 to replace it, the truck's not worth it. Uh, so I'm standing here in front of you tonight, uh, asking that I be forgiven my budgetary error by not including that line item in the vehicle replacement fund. And one would ask the question, well, what's the difference if you buy that truck this week, or three weeks from now, in 11-12? And the difference is, is that in 11-12, we already have a line item to purchase and refurbish our squad truck, and if this rolls into next year, that's gonna impact on that line item, which means that I'm gonna have to come back and stand in front of you sometime in August or September, and again, ask your forgiveness. So, uh, uh, if you will consider the purchase of this, uh, truck tonight, I'd be gratefully appreciative, and, uh, even though I'm a little bit on the frugal side, uh, I learned my lesson, and that'll never happen again. Because you put the line item in there, it doesn't mean you have to spend it.
Yes.
Truly taught me that.
Yes. Good, thank you, uh...
Any questions that I may be able to answer?
Appreciate it. Anyone from the public on this item?
No, sir.
Um, get a motion on this item?
So moved.
In a second? All right, thank you. Um, Councilmember Legay?
Yes, uh, Chief, I have a question, but I'd like to direct it towards Julie, please?
Sure.
With respect to vehicle replacement and, and this, um, this cost of $28,929.10, how will that be funded?
Um, Mayor Schlum, Councilmember Legay, the way it will be funded is through our vehicle replacement fund. Um, what we have, what we do every year is we allocate a portion of every vehicle that we own, a portion of that depreciation is charged to each department in the general fund, and transferred over to the vehicle replacement fund. So when Chief Agreka says it wasn't budgeted, it was sort of budgeted, because his department was charged a piece of that vehicle, and there's been accumulating funds in there every year, so then when we go to replace the vehicle, it does not come out of the general fund, it comes out of the vehicle replacement fund.
Do you know what the balance in that fund is currently?
Um, if my memory serves me correct, it's around $600,000 or $700,000.
So, so there's adequate funding to purchase this vehicle, and that fund is there exclusively for purchasing vehicles?
Uh, Mayor Schlum, Councilmember Legay, that, that's correct. That's the purpose of that fund.
So we're not moving it over from a surplus item or a general fund?
No, mayor.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Any other questions on this item? All right, we have a motion, a second, all in favor, indicate to say an aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor 7-0.
All right, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Item 17, consideration resolution 2011-25, renewing an intergovernmental agreement between Maricopa County Library District and Town of Fountain Hills Library Services for five years commencing fiscal year 2011 to '12. Julie?
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. Um, in 2001, voters approved a general obligation bond issue to build the library, and at that time, the town entered into an intergovernmental agreement for the Maricopa County Library District to actually operate the library, and that was a 10-year agreement. That agreement expired in April of 2011, and so the proposal now is to renew that agreement for five years. The library district, that is the, the, um, maximum amount of agreements they will enter into at this point, so that's why it's only for five years, but there's an option to keep on renewing it.
Very good, thank you. Any speaker cards on this item?
No, sir.
Um, can you get a motion from the council?
Mayor?
Yep.
Move to approve resolution 2011-25, renewing the IGA with Maricopa County for the operation of our library.
In a second? Second. All right, any questions, comments for staff on this item? Councilmember Dickey?
Mayor, Julie, was there, uh, any changes? Um, there was a time where there was a lot, quite a few, uh, articles in action about trying to change some of the provisions of this. Does this ensure us or insulate us at all on some of those, some of those items? I know that you probably remember, Rick, about that, that some of the larger cities and that kind of thing. Um, have you heard about any of that happening again, and will this ensure any sort of protection?
Um, Mayor Schlum, Councilmember Dickey, I have not heard anything in the upcoming session, uh, but I've not received any assurance that it won't come back up again. And the issue is that some of the larger cities, these libraries, the library district is funded through property tax of all properties, of all, um, in all of Maricopa County. Um, the, some of the larger cities, who of course, get a significant amount of revenue and run their own libraries, get less money than the cost of the library. We, as a town, if they changed the formula, meaning the bigger cities got what they actually cost, we would get, our library district would get less money. And so then they would not be able to, to fund our library, and chances are that they would look to the town to help fund it. And that budget is about $900,000 a year to run that library, so... I, I don't know that this IGA protects us from that. That would probably be a question for Andrew.
Uh, thank you, mayor. Um, this may be something to keep in mind at the league with the resolutions and the, and, uh, whatever they may decide to bring forward.
Good.
Thank you.
Anything else, counsel? All right, all in favor, indicate to say an aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor 7-0.
Thank you very much. All right, item 18, public hearing regarding the tax levy, resolution 2011-20, adopting the tentative budgets of the town, 2011-12 fiscal year budget for the town of Fountain Hills. So open up a public hearing. Um, Rick, Julie, any presentation on this item?
We did have, uh, mayor and council, we did have, uh, some information to present to you, kind of recap what the, uh, the budget process looked like, and also some additional, uh, data that we'd like to share, and so I'll just turn it over to Julie.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. Um, hopefully, tonight, we'll be able to adopt the budget. What I wanted to do is kind of recap where we've been over the last several months, just for the benefit of the public or anybody that, that didn't, um, get a chance to attend any of our meetings. So I'll go through the presentation, and again, this is just a recap of sort of where we've been and how we've started, and what the process is. But again, I'd be happy to answer any questions along the way. When we first started this process, these were the, the budget concerns and issues that we had to, um, take into consideration. First and most importantly, was the prolonged economic recession that was leading to foreclosed properties, obviously, less revenues, as well as our aging infrastructure, which, as it ages, it costs more money to maintain. And then a decreased proportionate share of state shared revenues due to the increased population of surrounding communities. And we anticipated that, we knew that we were not gonna grow as much as some of the other cities that had a lot more available land. And then the lack of sustainable or diversified revenue base. Um, as we've talked about, we depend heavily on state shared revenues as one component, about 42% of our revenues, and then our local sales tax makes up another 40%. So a significant amount of money is just from two revenue sources. And then business attraction and retention, as well as the implementation of a downtown vision plan. As I mentioned, the state shared revenues, we get state shared revenues based on population. 42% of our, our revenue comes from the state, and it's based on population. Our 2005 census population was 24,492. Our 2010 census population is 22,489. That's a decrease of up 8%. In 2011, our state shared revenue, again, based on population, was $6.4 million. In 2012, next year, because of the decreased population, we will only anticipate $5.5 million, and that was a revenue loss of about $900,000. When we first started again the budget process, we talked about budget solutions, and that they must be aligned with three principles. First of all, that any solution we had must be permanent and sustainable. We wanted to preserve the organizational integrity, and we wanted to be equitable. We had several meetings, starting back in October. We had, um, started with a planning and retreat on October 12th, a Capital Projects Workshop. Then we had a council retreat on October 28th. On November 30th, we had the council and staff retreat, and then a work study in December, and then, um, again, another preliminary budget in February. We had two open houses, one in December, one in, in April. And then we had several meetings in March, April, May, and June on budget updates, with adoption of the tentative budget on May the 25th, and hopefully, the final adoption this evening. Um, the summary is, of all of our funds... The summary is of all of our funds, we have several different funds. The maximum expenditures for all of those funds is $38.3 million with 12.6 in the general fund, which is our main operating fund. And of course, our capital projects, we're having a significant expenditure of $17.1 Some of the options that we considered when we started this process is we had to cover a $900,000 revenue gap. So we had proposed a tax on telecommunications and then that did not pass. So then that is not included in the budget that we have before you. Expenditure options that were considered, and again, these are not all in the budget, these were everything that we looked at. We looked at staff pay cuts, we looked at staff furloughs, we looked at eliminating programs. One thing we did look at that is in the budget is reducing our outside agency contracts for services by 20% and that saved us $71,000. We did not use rainy day funds. We did not eliminate the funding for our vehicle replacement fund. We did, however, propose restructuring a debt payment for the community center for $193,000. And we also talked about reducing our contract for law enforcement. And again, that was not, that did not, is not moved forward. All of the funds' resources for the town is $32 million. And again, the general fund, our main operating fund, that's about 40%. And you can see the capital projects is a big portion, it's 44%. And we have a lot of funding that's other than town funding that makes that up. And I'll go over that in a second. All of our funds' expenditures, 38.3 million. And again, you can see the capital projects fund is the biggest piece of pie there at This is just a look at our general fund, our main operating fund, and taking a look back to '06, '07. And you can see that we got almost $17 million in '06, '07. Whoa. And we're anticipating next year 12.6. So that's a significant reduction. As revenues decline, expenses have to decline as well. We don't deficit spend, we will only spend what revenues we have available. So our expenditures are also down from $15 million down to 12.6. And where does the money go in the general fund? And you can see that the public safety, the law enforcement and fire department make up 46%. Our community services, which is our community center, our parks, our recreation, that's 17%. Our development services, which is our public works, our medians, that's 13%. And the administration, which is our finance, IT, the manager, the town clerk, HR, our volunteer programs, that's in the administration. So the total of that is 12.9 million in the general fund. Our streets is another operating fund. The revenue for the streets comes from the state and that revenue is down 40% from fiscal year '07. So we had almost $2 million in '06, '07 and we're just at $1.1 million for next year. And where that money goes, goes to open space, pavement management, street sweeping, everything that can only be used for streets. The downtown excise tax, which is our economic development or downtown development, that is funded through our local sales tax. And that fund is about $315,000 is the revenue from that fund. These are the capital projects, 17.1 million that we have. You can see on this chart that $3 million is coming from the town funds, $500,000 is coming from the downtown or the excise tax fund, and $13 million is coming from non-town funds. And that's primarily made up of the bond initiative that will be bonds, downtown improvements, as well as some fire and emergency projects. Just a general look at how the town compares to other cities and towns for the general fund operating cost per 1,000 students and where the dark blue line at 50...
Or students.
Students, citizens.
We're all students.
56 cents per 1,000 citizens, which is fairly efficient compared to other cities and towns. And again, a look at our town staffing levels. Since '03, '04, when we had 75, we had a high of 88 in '08, '09, and we're now down to 59. Going on its own. This is just a snapshot looking in the future. We've shown this before. This is where we talk about any decision we make has to be sustainable because we know that our revenues are going to be less than our expenditures if we stay on the current track. So this is just a chart showing we're going to be through the next 15 years up to 2025, that eventually we're going to have to address the issue of closing that gap either through further expenditure cuts or other revenue sources. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Julie, for getting quite familiar with that document. Anyone from the public on that item?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. We are in the public hearing portion, so we now close the public hearing, correct, Andrew? So I'll close the public hearing and move on to item 19, council discussion direction to the town manager. Nothing there from tonight? I'll go ahead, Councilmember Dickey.
Mayor, thank you. I always get confused, does this one may bring up what someone from call the public may have said?
Um, Andrew?
For follow-up?
Oh, yes.
Because Mr. Brent said something about, you know, newspapers and other things like that piling up. And so I thought maybe that would be a good discussion for block watch when we get to that point.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Good, thank you. Item 20, summary of council request report and recent activity of town manager. Anything there, Rick?
Nothing at this time.
All right, good. Councilmember Dickey?
Mayor, before we get into this special session, I just wanted to mention that a man that I used to know at, worked for the Capital Times when I was working down there, is now with Arizona Municipal Risk Retention Pool, which just put out their annual report. And he had called, oh gosh, a couple of months ago. And he called me and met with the town manager and with Lori and the mayor and I. And so we got the book now and I brought a few, so if anybody's interested. We're talking about how we got to get ourselves out there. Well, we're at least being featured and there's a nice article in there too. And I wanted to thank the mayor and the town manager and Lori for your input and I think we're all quoted in this, so thank you.
Yeah, good. Yeah, lots of nice Fountain Hills pictures on the cover of their annual report. Tremendous. Now we look for a motion to adjourn our regular meeting. Can I get a motion? Second? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? All right, move in now to our special session. Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please, or I can note that all folks are present. Good, thank you. Only done seven roll calls tonight. I will point out that our next regularly scheduled meeting will be on August 4th. So we do, we will not meet as in a regular council meeting here until through the month of July. Item number one on our special session is consideration resolution 2011-20, adopting the tentative budget as the 2011-12 fiscal year budget for the Town of Fountain Hills. Rick or Julie, you just gave, Rick, Julie just gave a presentation. Anything more for us?
We have none.
All right, council, or anyone from the public in the special session here?
No, sir.
All right, council, look for a motion to accept resolution 2011-20 as our budget?
No.
All right, questions, comments on our budget? Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you. Julie, if I can just quick ask, since we just got the final one on Tuesday, I haven't really had time to compare the two. You had mentioned that there were going to be like little footnote type things added, you know, to explain expenditure increases or significant changes. Did that, did they make that addition or will that be happening?
Mayor Shlum, Councilmember Hanson, we are still working on it, it is still a work in progress. And yes, we intend to do that. I believe, I believe we've done most of them, if not all of them, but it is still a work in progress and we intend to have it done by the end of July.
And would it be possible to maybe compile a list of all the changes? You provided some of the larger ones, I think you gave us like seven. But, you know, we had things like some permit fee changes and some things like that. Maybe just a, like a summary of what all those changes were?
Absolutely.
Would be real helpful.
We'd be happy to do that.
Good, highlight changes. Councilmember Elke?
Thank you. Julie, I just wanted to touch on, you did the presentation a few moments ago as far as the budget and the process and everything. It was, you know, as a new council member and this being my first year on the Budget Committee, it was an interesting process and I think it was very educational and informative. And I appreciate everything that the staff has done and the information you've provided me. One thing I didn't see in the presentation is with us paying off our town hall and the savings that we're going to realize as a result of that. And I think that's, I don't think that we can overemphasize that enough, that we will be using some funds to pay off town hall and will realize, you know, funds and significant savings there. And I think it's really important that the residents know that. And that's one of the major reasons why we were able to balance this budget and not increase taxes. So I'll have you speak to that in a moment. And then just some observations. Whenever we started the budget process and being on that committee, we looked at, it's basically one or the other, revenues or cuts. I mean, it is basically the way that it appeared to me. And I know that when we started the process, there's a desire for sustainability and everything that you mentioned before, as far as having a long-term solution and a plan. And I'm very pleased about everything that's been done over, through this budget discussions, that we haven't had to raise taxes. And I realize that was discussed previously amongst council and, you know, that was something through our discussions in the Budget Committee, we wanted to make sure that we presented all options to the council here and that the Budget Committee wasn't making any decisions, certainly presenting all possibilities and all avenues that the council had as far as what we could do. And I know that we did everything that we could and we were successful in not having to raise taxes in this and very pleased about that as far as the economic times. But could you speak to what we're going to be doing as far as our town hall? And might I suggest that we have a mortgage burning ceremony once we do pay off our town hall? And we, as residents, all own our town hall officially and perhaps we can have a big check and, you know, with the amount and have some kind of ceremony? Because I think that is very important, very significant, especially in these economic times, that we're paying off our house. I mean, and I think that's very important for folks to realize what we're doing right now. So if you could speak to that, please.
Thank you, Mayor Shlum, Councilmember Elke. I was remiss in not mentioning, that's probably one of the biggest things and what helped us balance this budget without the additional revenue source. What we came up with, which was something very favorable, was to take reserves that we had and pay off the debt for this building, about $2.9 million. What that does is over the life of the bonds, it saves us almost $300,000. But in addition to that, that frees up $300,000 that we have to make as an annual mortgage or a debt service payment. So I apologize, I should have brought that up because that is a very significant thing. We're very fortunate that we've not had to dip into reserves over the past three years when the economy was so bad and that we have those reserves now available to be able to take them and put them to good use. So thank you for pointing that out. That is something very significant that, you know, we should all be proud of.
And Julie, just to follow up, can you explain just briefly how it is that we have the reserves? Because it kind of, some folks out there may say, well, if you have $2.9 million to pay off town hall, well, you have plenty of money that's, you know, out there. So why is it that we were able to utilize these funds? Can you explain just a little bit, just in a nutshell, as far as the dynamic, as far as our budget and our baseline?
Sure. Mayor, councilmember, take members of the council, the way we have been able to get reserves is in the past, when the economy was really good, we obviously had more money coming in than we did what we were spending. And at the time, the council then made a decision that any excess reserves would go over into our capital projects fund, number one. But we would also build up a reserve fund balance that we would maintain and have a fund balance policy that said, that policy is something that bond rating agencies look at when you give them your financial information, that you have sufficient reserves that in the event of an emergency, you can draw on those reserves and not have to burden the taxpayers. So we're very fortunate that we have about $6 million in the general fund in reserves, which is higher than what we really need and, you know, we can safely draw down the money. So yes, that's how we have the reserves and it's a good thing to have.
Very good, yeah, good question.
And again, I can say, we're basically using our savings to pay off our debts, is what we're doing.
Correct.
In a nutshell, is what we're doing. So, and that's, I think, very important. And I would like to, you know, perhaps, maybe it's a little silly, but have a ceremony of some sort. Because I think it is a significant thing for us to now own our own house. I think it's very important. Thank you.
Great, great. Any other questions, comments, council? Councilmember Hanson?
On Tuesday night, we talked about the meetings that have been held and the open houses and how the turnout really wasn't that great. And maybe looking at some alternative ways of reaching out next year, this coming year. You know, maybe, I don't, I'm not really sure what that would be. Maybe we can get some help from SPAC. They were so successful in reaching out when they did their studies and, you know, getting people engaged and, you know, more at the front end instead of the back end. And I think that might be worth a try, just to have bigger turnouts at those meetings. And then this is one other, there was some confusion on Tuesday also when I was talking about some of the, and this is in economic development, the studies that had been done. Because I thought there had been a gap study done and then everyone was like, there wasn't a gap study done. Well, there wasn't, just, because it drove me crazy. So I found this, it was done actually in 2007. So it might be interesting to just go back and look at some of this data compared to the retail marketing analysis.
Good. Yep, and public engagement is right at the top of my list because I think it's good to have. And we'll have a debrief also, I think, as councilmembers offline and with staff about how to improve the budget thing. And I think our goal this year was to have a lot more public engagement. And I know a lot of things continue to change and it changed our numbers a lot that really, to some degree, kept us on our heels. And particularly, fortunately, we're in good condition to work from our heels because of the savings and such. But public engagement's key, with Councilmember Hanson mentioned the SPAC process, they're not going to be updating for, you know, a little while yet, so they may have some time on their hands. I'd really like to engage SPAC and some of those volunteers that do a tremendous job in engaging the public, just to engage the public in that dialogue, much, much more and more often and earlier. We're not always going to have all of our numbers to give all the public because we don't know what they are yet. But we can certainly start to get more folks engaged in the public process. And I think information about government funding is much different than, as Councilmember Legay said in the past, much different than, what, how do you word municipal funding? It's a...
It's an odd duck.
Odd duck, just like our nice ducks we took in tonight from the Public Art Committee. But it's an odd duck. So that would be tremendous, getting more folks engaged in the public budget process. Heck, let's invite the Tea Party to get more engaged directly so that they can have a role here and everybody in our community. You know, get them involved, everybody can have some good input and make sure that they can, you know, I think most folks are extremely proud of their community. But, you know, times are tough federally, you know, there's a deficit here at town hall. We balance the budget, we've been reducing the budget and not spending our savings. So there's a big difference from what's going on federally. And I think it'd be great to make sure folks that are concerned at federal level know that things are being taken care of at a local level and getting them engaged in that public engagements. I think, you know, it's very, it's always been a very positive process. And I'll probably get more volunteers from it, too. They want to get into a commission or other things, once they get engaged. And I think the Citizens Academy that you guys started this year was tremendous and also educating the public and getting them informed on how the government works was great. But I think getting more folks into the budget, although not, some folks will not come because it's sometimes not the most exciting topic, but it is important. So I think that's a great, great suggestion. I will just emphasize, what I've seen from up here in the council is I've seen you folks in finance and all the directors and the entire team at town hall face a challenge from going from roughly an $18 million budget for the general fund to just over a $12 million budget in the general fund. And of which, $6 million roughly goes to public safety. When we had $18 million budget, we had a $6 million public safety, leaving $12 million remaining. And now we have $6 million remaining, so roughly 50% reduction over the last three, four years. And that's to pay for everything outside of public safety like streets and parks and finance and administration and recreation, community center, senior services, on and on and on, everything else that we're so proud of in our town. And staff has been operating and been innovative and council's been smart. We've reduced that budget 50% over many, many, over the last several years. So, and most folks in our community wouldn't even know it. That's just how good you guys are as our town staff and we thank you very, very much. In light of that, as was already discussed, we haven't touched our savings. We're going to do that to really pay ourselves here this next fiscal year. But thank goodness we have that savings there and we have enough of it to still... we have that savings there, and we have enough of it to still look good to Moody's, and they're going to see that we're paying off our debt and paying ourselves and saving the interest dollars on town hall. That's tremendous. We haven't touched the rainy day fund, everybody would have thought it's been raining, and I'll tell you, from what I've learned, other communities, some of them have no reserves in their general fund, no rainy day fund, and I'm sure their capital budget's not looking very good either. So you guys have done a great job preparing us for this recession that's been longer and deeper than we, than any of us expected, and now look where we are, we didn't raise taxes again. We still do not have a very sustainable financial platform for our futures. You can see all the charts, expenditures are going to be passing revenues, even with an increased economy and a bolstered downtown, which is certainly going to be a very important part of us having a good, sustainable future. But when your budget is contingent upon people spending money and the economy having great effects, we don't want to have things like public safety and parks and streets impacted because sales taxes go down, we still need to maintain those things, so that's going to be critical to the future moving forward, and I know we'll be looking to good smart minds here in our community help us figure that out the right way. But to date, you guys have done a tremendous job, I think staff should be, feel completely secure, and hopefully they feel as gracious, as appreciated as our deputies earlier tonight felt from that certificate of appreciation for catching the rock burglar. You guys have done yeoman's work in town hall, and with fewer people, you've done more, and you've done more with less, and we hope you folks feel the appreciation from our town council and from our citizenry, and I also need to thank all of our volunteers that step up to support staff and also to support us in the areas that make our community that just, that much more rich. And the economy is improving, as you stated, there's talk of a double dip, we're hopeful that's not going to occur, but things are going to start looking rosier here in Fountain Hills with the economy, and there'll be brighter days, and the economy coming back might free up capital markets to realize some of our downtown vision plans, and we hope that sooner than later, but we are prepared for that, and I want to thank staff very much, and thank the citizenry for all the input that they did give, and the volunteers and SPAC and others for great input, and thank you, I want to thank council for being great partners in going through a very tough budget season once again, and hopefully next year will not be as difficult, so that's what I wish to share.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
Thank you, staff.
Thank you, staff. Thank you. Council, anything else on the budget? Councilmember Hanson?
I just have something, kind of some exciting ideas to share. The volunteer coordinator heard you at the end of talking about that issue on Tuesday, say, maybe we can explore some new ideas on how to, you know, have some new projects. So she just kind of put together some things that just going forward are kind of some really good ideas that could maybe save money in town hall, and good ideas for next year.
Good, thank you. Yep, keep the great ideas coming, everyone. Anything further? All right, council, I think we've got a motion, we have adequate motion, Andrew? Yes, we do. We do. All right, all in favor of the motion and second indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
All right, we've adopted the budget for next year, which starts in July. Thank you, everybody. We do have one more item on the agenda. Speaking of next year's budget, we have an item on here related to next year's budget. And since we're not meeting in July, it's probably why it's here. Item number two on our special session tonight is consideration of approving construction services agreement between the town of Fountain Hills and Barbagallo Electric LLC for the installation of diesel-fueled standby generators at fire station number one and number two in the amount of twenty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars. All.
All right, thank you, Mayor and council, I'll try to make, try to make this brief. Previously, the fire department, back in two thousand nine, applied for a firefighter's assistant grant through FEMA, which was awarded in May of two thousand and ten. The grant was to purchase two generators, emergency generators, one for fire station one and the other for fire station two. Currently, fire station one does have a backup generator, but it's only sized so that if power does go out, it will power the bay doors and some emergency lighting, so you would not have air conditioning and other electrical services to the facility. Fire station two does not have a backup generator. So previously, council did approve the purchase of the generators, and this project spans two fiscal years. This contract with Barbagallo Electric will be for the installation of the generators, and they do have some equipment that they need to purchase that has a two to three week lead time, so tonight we're asking for you to approve the purchase, the construction services contract, so we can get those orders in the first of, first of July, get it ordered, supplied, installed, because part of the grant, the fire department actually got the grant extended through August, so in order for us to get reimbursement, these need to be operational by the end of August. We received four quotes for this installation, two were local contractors, and the low bid before you tonight is a local contractor.
Terrific, excellent. Anyone from the public on this item?
Yes, sir.
All right, could I get a motion on this item?
So moved.
Second, all right, any questions, comments from council? Is this item in its entirety being reimbursed grant-funded?
It is, it is not. It's a, the grant itself was a ninety, ninety percent grant, ten percent town match for the generators, we are paying for, we are paying for the installation. The overall project is about ninety thousand dollars in total, and it's two-thirds grant, one-third town funds.
Okay, overall?
Overall.
Okay, good, thank you. And we've got a motion, second, any questions, council? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye? Opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Good. For adjournment, I just want, going into summer here, watch your kids around water. Watch your kids around water, I know the fire department appreciates that message and hope everybody watch your kids around water, have a tremendous summer, we'll see you back here in August. Thank you very much, council.
Thank you, Mayor.
Motion.
Yeah, motion to adjourn. Thank you. Vote still be in session all through July. All in favor?
Aye.